Good morning. It is Tuesday, August 8th at 6:59 a.m. This is the regular August 2023 School Board Meeting of the Old School. We're here in the Central Office Conference Room. Board members Sayer, Dave, Neil, and Heimbach are present. Board member Nabel absent. Also with us today are Superintendent South and Business Manager Jepson and Technology Director Engle. Welcome, everyone. Do we have anyone joining us? Yeah, I think they're supposed to be running, but it's been running. No? Almost be well then, that's right. Say, Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're trying a new way of viewing our meeting materials today. So be sure to comment and make suggestions for appreciation or changes. We will move on to the confirmation and approval of the agenda. Is there any additions? Wait, I need to do that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So Heimbach moves to approve. Is there a second? Sir, Sayer's second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next item is the welcoming of visitors, which I've already done, and communication. We had a nice card from Mrs. Van de Venture. Thank you for the key change you gave me on my retirement. It was a pleasure to work with so many wonderful staff and students. It was a difficult decision for me, but it's time for new adventures. Thanks again, Depp Van de Venture. You have any idea how many you would choose?
That's a really good question. I bet it was under key chain too. If I'm in that rich case, no, but yeah.
She's done great work, so. Along with many of our other, all of our other staff. Thank you, Mrs. Van de Venture. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda today, we have approval of minutes from July 20th, both the regular and the special meeting retreats, review of bills, the July financial reports, and the business managers' and superintendent's reports. I would note that was it for the regular meeting minutes. You resented another version. The only difference had been the tagging on of the page with the approved bills. Yes, so we approved them, but they had not been included.
Not included.
Okay. So I'd be seeking a motion. Some of these items are for approval, and the business manager and superintendent's reports are for acceptance. So is there a motion?
There is no July financial reports. They have not got most one yet.
Oh, thank you for that. So item D is not part of this. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda? Okay, and the proper, what we're looking for is I move to approve items now A through C and accept items B and F on the consent agenda. Is there a second? Sir, D's second. Any discussion or anything either of you would like to highlight?
You could. I mean, you can see what our enrollment is. We're concerned with the enrollment was in the geometry.
We caught your click on the items.
We can all pull it up.
Professional development.
Yeah. We're gonna do that where we.
Well, we. Okay, but maybe we won't need it.
When we come to the staffing, I'll talk a little bit more about that. Again, the principals have been here a lot. They're working through. Jordan's gonna have an uphill climb with changes in staffing. But he's doing a really good job. He's been here all the time. Thing is great, right? We'll change that. Other than that, I mean.
Okay, any questions from the board members? If you didn't have a chance to ask them in advance? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Say no. Motion passes, and the consent agenda has been approved and accepted. All right, so the next item is student achievements. Ask for requests from the board with regard to student achievement topics we would like to hear about, in addition to all those items that relate directly to our goals.
Yes, she like sent me a couple. She just said she wanted to hear more from students, like classroom geometry, you know, having them come. Maybe from each grade level, how they're working towards reaching the benchmarks, what changes they're making. That was a really good idea because you're right, and so. Open suggestions from what you would like to hear and see or the program at school you'd like to hear more about, maybe.
I've been hearing or seeing things over the summer on career tech student organizations, students that have gone to national conventions. And then I mentioned to you the, we have a student that attended a Senate Youth Program. And I think that'd be very interesting to hear about. Not necessarily a school activity, but a student activity. Also, like, if you hear more about workplace learning experiences that we're anticipating being more active in.
If I didn't refer.
If anyone else thinks of any student achievement topics, please share them with Mrs. South, so we can give them on the agenda for coming.
Maybe one thing I'll work with Larry too. And well, you know, because this year we're gonna have to develop the cybersecurity or our plan or how we're going to. So we've got some things in work and some distance classes. And Jordan is super open and flexible. So I think we're gonna see some changes in how we're gonna be widening out our offering for kids in our high school.
And the addition of that now we've been able to hire up high school junior high parent who's going to be assisting with the some of the distance learning options, whether it be ITV or distance.
And you might want to hear a little bit about how we're handling that. It's shorted every school this person that's getting that.
Okay, we'll get to that. Okay. The legendary update. Does Marcia join us? Are we gonna have to circle back?
Yeah, we might have to. Marcia Stu is the other lady that works. She's actually a school board member from Houston or former school board member from Houston. And they, I had a meeting with them yesterday, and the state is picking up an entire tab for this guidance that they're gonna work with us this year in the mentoring and leading us through $24,000. They've been that up. So they asked, you wanna just do one part or both? And I just said, I'm assuming since state paper, we'll just go for the whole. And they are gonna work with this. In fact, Gray and Brennan and I have, sorry, Gray and Jordan and I have a meeting with Sue and with Marcia on Thursday as an admin team. And I think we need one month. They already started working on the calendar. So a lot of the footwork that we would have had to have done on our own states and paid for them to do it. So they've developed the calendar and saying like, okay, we've got half the financials done on this day. This needs to be, they'll be right along with us. I've already sent them our new agenda, my superintendent guidance. They're gonna be going through that and helping us too. And their main thing is that we're gonna do this change, not just for here and now, but for the future, so that for, you know, as new board members come on, board members go off, that we just continue to do the same thing because it's like Brian Dennis, what we're gonna do. So I think they're gonna need Brian to go to some training and Jordan to go in, gonna get caught up where they're gonna figure out what they need to do. So they don't pay for everything that needs to go with that. So the way it's gonna work is Shannon will be billed every month for them. And then we will be going into web grams and, you know, digging out of that pot and we're gonna have that down. So. I, yeah, it's, we weren't gonna do it because it's just so much money, you know, for some things that we can do. But it's a safety word and great opportunity, I think.
And I also thought it seemed valuable, but the demands on your time to delve into that, I thought. Or I just, I was concerned about your ability to, not your, not your ability to do it, but to do everything. And I think that would be really helpful for us. I don't know how long the state's gonna be paying for these. But I think the idea is probably to get some local or locals, board members or additional people trained in the state and not have to.
Because you guys just went through it with the CTE board.
CTE board, yeah, and we're going to be, we're taking the next step and having them guide us to get our goals set. Our next step is to crosswalk what's required with, of our board in state law with the job description and our goals that we want.
And Marcia said.
A lot of work. Has she joined?
Well, they're trying to get in and they're not getting in. Or maybe we can start talking. We move on to?
We can.
Do you wanna move on to the chiller update? Maybe that could be Brian's.
Yep. Okay, so moving on to item A under regular meeting facilities. Committee report, facilities committee, chiller updates. Sounds like Brian has some knowledge for us.
Great. I spoke to Dean last week from Chiller Systems in Parkville. He came down and looked at our chiller and then forwarded an email last night that there was no place to fix the old chiller. But Dean said there is a chiller up in Parkville. We used one that they have serviced the past couple of years and that we might be able to get it. He was thinking maybe roughly $25,000. We can get that, we can get that brought down here, set out on the ground. He was thinking $20,000, $30,000 to get a takeout and run it in there for conditioning in the school. So I asked him what the possibility of coming up there and taking a look at it with him. And he just said absolutely, that'd be a great idea to come up there, take a look at it, and just let it know. So with the board's consent, I'd like to go up there and take a look at it. And then we can hold a special meeting to see if we're able to move forward with purchases.
So would it, would it be able to be installed by sometime this fall?
I don't know if it would or not because we'd have to get somebody to bring it down. We would have to get it set in place of what person or height that is there. And then have Chiller Systems come down and they would start it for us. And then I think we should work with Chiller Systems to have them come and, you know, check it over, make sure that everything's up to date. And I don't think that we should have that anymore because I don't feel that it's beneficial that somebody like me wants to give them that. Somebody in Parkville that can do it.
Do you think they represented that the estimate of an additional $20,000 to $30,000 for installation of that all in, transportation, electrical, whatever, additional piping, whatever?
Yeah, so I would say would be all in and up and running for $50,000 plus minus.
Warranty, expected life of?
Oh, expected life? Ten years probably, at least until we could come up with a current one on what we wanna do with that.
So no warranty, but could last 10 years and we would have to repair it two times.
Right.
Do you know our per school?
Absolutely, yeah.
And what is the age of this?
I believe he said it was a 2006 model.
Oh, one year, really?
I know, so fairly, fairly new.
But it's still old.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like something well worth exploring. And I think we did kind of have a special meeting in our drawings anyway, so.
And then I did reach out and I talked to Lori in ICS. She thought that was, I just wanted to dig her brain. It seems to be outside the seat. She thought that was pretty good.
Yeah.
Better than 14, 15, something like that.
So do you think that Dave or someone else should also go up or you should go up and be a part of this?
Either way.
Whatever. I haven't contacted Dean yet to find out at day or time that would work. So I wanted to talk about it here first.
Yeah.
So.
I think it sounds like a great option to at least take the next step.
Because that's what you said, it looks exhausted all of our efforts before.
Yeah, I think we're all exhausted out of current things that we use.
Um.
And I don't think that searching for something new right now is beneficial because we don't know the exact size of what we wanna put in until we have some.
Glenn, what is the timeline to save that from us? What are we, it's not gonna be this fall, is there?
If we could get everybody lined up, possibly. Great, moving on.
Well, then that would be a question we would wanna try to have answered. Good for the special meeting. Whether or not we get it this fall. I mean, if we can't, we're nowhere soft.
Right, but at least we would have a plan in place for.
I suppose it depends on the weather. If we can get it in this fall, but if it turns into a snowstorm, we have it. But I mean, if it's a beautiful fall, well, whatever, it's a chance to still use it.
Right.
So. All right, anything else regarding the chiller? We're looking for more information and anticipating as far as possible, the special meeting next.
Yes, and that's the time when ICS is coming through, so.
Yeah, good idea. Okay.
Did David ever look at the fans up in the attic?
Okay, I don't know, you know, he's kinda had it, yeah.
Good.
He, he just said that he doesn't think any of them are connected because they're just so old. But yeah, he was thinking maybe he could come and get them together.
Okay.
Okay, he's gone, really?
Yeah.
Are we? Getting Marcia or no?
I think Larry's helping me get her.
Science floor update.
Okay, so Dave, we're gonna do the punch list. I think it was originally planned for this week, but they had trouble getting the cleaners in. It looks fantastic. You might wanna go up there and look at it. Painting's done, order's up, flooring's down, everything's down. They just need to break cleaners in. And they are hiring clean people to come in. So I think Thursday, Dave said, if any room will be in, and then they're gonna do the punch list on Monday. Otherwise, well, we don't have a ceiling, the second floor, so we must kind of be fixed. But yeah, they were here and they were working. But it was nice when the fence went down because it was like, we're gonna be able to get in there and get ready to go. Yeah, you'll have to go up and see it. I mean, it looks really nice and it really does feel different up there than it did before, so.
Okay. ICS, any questions? On science floor? ICS presentation dates?
Yes, they weren't ready to go in. She didn't wanna just kind of come and do a half drop. So she asked if they could push drop till the 16th, and that's the day when they're gonna come in. For the teachers, they're gonna come in for, in the afternoon, they're gonna be sending them, they're gonna also be presenting to the public, which I made a request in the hallway. I don't know if we have any part to make further about that. But that night, they're gonna do the presentation to the public. We're gonna put it on Zoom. We're gonna take it, we're gonna put it on our website so that people have access to it, you know, later on at that time of year, whichever. They've got all those different options. But they requested that they, we have a special board meeting on the 16th at 7:00 a.m. and come to do their presentation. That's gonna be the, what's next. They have been fantastic. Like Lori has answered our phone calls. We were calling her. She was on vacation with her family. She called us back. She's answering phone calls. And I don't know if that's even in the scope of what her job or what our contract was with them, but she is doing everything to help us, you know. And she's been, they've been fantastic. I just am thrilled that we decided to go with ICS. I feel like they've given us their all. And we're not just another, they really are invested in us. Okay, so we're gonna do the best we can, so. Really thankful that you decided to go that way.
All right, so end 16.
Email with a yes, oh.
I already have one.
All right.
Anything else on facilities? All right, school policy. There were, yeah, sorry, number of first reading. We had such a break on policies. I sent a few questions.
Yeah.
Oh, you're.
Yeah.
So now I'm gonna probably be bouncing back and forth through these policies. Next to policies from the guidelines, we're gonna go each one separately.
Yeah, if that's all right with you, just simply because. And I don't know if this is the best for you. What I did was to state the current. And then they're suggested what they sent from, you know, school boards. And then putting them together so that you don't have to, you know, go back and forth. So anything that's highlighted is the changes that were done and suggested by the board. And not that you have to keep those, especially on these recommended. On the recommended, you don't have to, you know, do what they suggest. But obviously, that's why we gave them, because they know, you know, they've got best information towards moving forward, so.
Okay, and on this one, my question, so we're talking about. There's, the suggestion is, this is the one that had the reference, yes. This, under board meeting procedures, the second paragraph, all votes of the board, other than on procedural matters, shall be roll called. So so far today, we've done a voice vote on the COVID general, which I think is clearly is procedural and is consent agenda procedural.
I'm assuming that is procedural. Now, I'm guessing as Marcia's working with us and they're gonna guide us. So that's kind of, I'm thinking that our agenda probably will change.
Okay, and we're going to be, we can act on any of these separately if we wish. But what Anna is recommending to us is a motion to amend all of these policies that are listed for first reading. And they presume, and that they be presented for adoption at the most. And she said as written, and so there are a few of them. Either I didn't see the highlighted version or we need to make some decisions on the bracketed language.
Right, yeah. So, okay, here's the suggestion for BCAA.
Okay, so let's make sure for those that are listening. Okay. So BC is meetings of the board. And there were no decisions that we needed to make in.
The bracket was like no official action may be taken, but you already, we already had that in our policy. So it was something that we already had. But it hasn't been too long since we visited this policy. We visited it last year, let's see. And, yeah.
Okay, so then the second one, I need to go back to here. The next one is BCAA, which is board, board meeting and agenda, and pre-meeting, board meeting agenda and pre-meeting preparation.
Yes, okay, now this one might change when we're working with Marcia.
And this is a recommended policy.
Right.
But one of the biggest changes due to change in state law was that we're required to allow voluntary recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance by board members, but it doesn't apply to the visitors. Yeah, so I think that was a big change. We had, we had the Pledge of Allegiance, and it's been changed to voluntary recitation.
Yeah, so I changed that because I thought that was the law. He said it right in the guidance from him, so I did put voluntary recitation. Then I put down currently what our board meeting is. The agenda, we don't post that in-house. And I don't think that there's any kind of a law from what I, I mean, I did some research. But we do post it on the district website and send it out to the OEA. We, you know, we've got it where it's accessible, everybody did. But hanging here in school, I don't know if anybody was.
It usually was always been on the door in various years. Oh. They were good.
I just read on that.
I don't know. But it's on both sides, or, yeah.
So I don't know if you wanna approve BCAA, and we're probably gonna have to go back to that, prove it later on once we're done working with Marcia too. But at least we're in line with policy for what we're doing now with our practices.
Okay, any questions on the board meeting agenda and separation? Otherwise, we'll move to FAAK. Open enrollment. So what were the key changes?
Okay.
And this is a required.
This is a required, so pretty much everything that they suggest, they left in there. So a parent who wishes to open enroll a student shall file an application for approval with the board. You had in, or we had in option two already, their suggestion. I don't know why we didn't have parents who wishes to open enroll. Maybe that was something to do. I didn't see any guidance on that. They have to file with the board.
It said something in the legislative update.
It didn't say what. And this type piece of it.
Let's see.
They've made clear that they must file an application. I don't know if schools were just admitting kids without applications or. But we've always, I mean, I don't think we've ever admitted anybody without an application and without the board's approval.
Seems like it makes clear that it's the parent's responsibility to make the application, not that like, oh, yeah, that's like somebody else's, like my school is gonna take care of it. My school district of residents will take care of it for me.
Um. So, and you can't go out and recruit families? But you can provide informational materials, I suppose. You know, if you came to school and were worried about school, you know, that you can actively go out and try to recruit kids.
So just a note for board members, as we look at what annex was placed in our packet as the suggestion, this is exactly how it comes from the School Board Association. And there are various kinds of brackets. There are the square edged brackets and there are emboldened. And then there's the squiggly brackets. Anywhere that you see brackets is, I think delineates a place where we may need to make a choice. And so they're showing an option one and an option two. Well, which one do we want? Well, right, so option one is we won't accept students from other districts. And that would be the end of the story. You know, nobody need a plot. You have to move. That's not how we operate now and I understand how, not how we want to operate. So option two is open enrollment, that we do accept applications from others, from students outside of districts and individual school procedure. And so that is, so then looking down on the amended version, we're seeing what Anna has suggested to us as what she suggests as the bracketed material that we need to add.
And most of this we already had. So we were pretty in line. And I think as we go through the policy with them, you know, they send us the updates. I think that that's why we're at a point where we're pretty much in line with what they have suggested before. So they're very appreciative and.
Any questions on the open enrollment policy recommendation? If not, we'll go then to DGGA, which is Professional Learning Plan.
Now, we had just went through this in June to change if the professional development, professional learning, remember that piece of it? But they did recommend that we put in there, if you can see on the amendment, the superintendent shall recommend professional development content area is appropriate for the board or school staff. To the board, sorry. And the board will designate professional learning for the district. I hate, ah, shoot, I gotta change that to professional learning. Okay, I'm gonna have to change these, the wording in here. I just know.
Okay, so note that this one is not called a required or recommended policy. It's called a Cognia policy. So for our, every five year accreditation process. So for our every five year accreditation process, this, this is, it's required, not by law, but.
So if you're okay with the adding that paragraph in there, I'll change it from um, professional development to professional learning.
Okay, so that will be, uh, both that change will be encompassed in the approval motion as a for a first reading. If there's any concern or objection.
Okay.
To A B E C is what you said.
School meal charge policy. So there have been a lot of changes in this one, and this is required, so I pretty much just. Amended ours to align with, the last time you um, adopt, or when we adopted it was in twenty twenty, so it's been three years. Three meals for COVID, so. And, you know, all the stuff with the meals that we went through this last year, so. That law. I just don't mind with it. And you can see the different things that are in there.
So there's some, there are some items in this one that we've crossed on.
Mm-hmm, that we had, so I took out the charging procedure. Um, it says the district shall allow the students to charge it, but we don't have to do shall allow. It um. That they, they took that out of there, we had charging procedure in there, but really we don't need that anymore, it's redundant because it says up above that you can't. Not let it be.
Which we never have done.
No.
Have always allowed. The regular meals.
And then we did have, or the district serves a student an alternate meal, we'd never done that, but that's no longer an option. Wasn't done, that's, that's across top. And then it does say that you, okay, you can't do things like you can't write on their hand or not serve them or give them a colored card. But you can do a sealed letter addressed to child's parent or guardian. Yeah. You know, you, I, none of these things we've done before, it's just.
How come when we get an email, or email, it's always when you're out of.
Well.
Can we change that to where you're done with like twenty dollars?
I think it is said in something. Five dollars, I think was. You need to be a higher.
It should be like it used to be twenty dollars.
I think you're gonna. That's an easy fix. Okay, there was one, there were a couple of things in here though that had some dates that you can choose and I influence the date, so under balance. It has within how many working days? So it says that students that graduate were um, or withdraw from the district may receive a refund of the remaining balance in their meal account within. And I put in thirty working days because for Shannon for end of the year, you know, so they graduate in May. They need to, you know, request those because if they requested in August for enough, within the year, so. I made it thirty days and that would be up to you guys if you wanna leave that. And then um, I did put in the next paragraph, um, a refund of monies must be submitted to the district office by June fifteenth. And that was a date that we could choose, but I thought, okay, that's about thirty days after the end of school. That would give Shannon stills, you know, time. To refund the money and it would still be in this, that fiscal year.
I see, okay, so, so families do need to request, it's just not an automatic refund.
Not important.
Does show, our policy does show that any money left in an active account, when is it declared in that?
I would suppose after July one.
They don't make that much, right? Yeah, it's the last child of the household. I wonder if it would be a good idea to amplify families if we know it's their last child in the district. You have X dollars in your accounts. You must request a refund by June fifteenth. Otherwise, you're saying, God, you have a hundred dollars in your account and. You didn't request a refund, well, oh, July first, oh, we moved it over to the angel fund today. I think there was a letter that went out.
Did everybody get a letter, maybe a thing of the year that said how much money they had in their account?
Also, I would link what they did, I think, the senior family or the families of his last child.
Oh, I just threw in the regulation for you guys, A B E C A R, the adult meals. Cause our adult meals went up this year and I have had a couple of teachers reach out to me and um. This um, administrative regulation is in here, like it outlines how much the cost of the meal has to be. You know, and the fact that we don't get reimbursed for it, so if I have any um, things about adult meals, I'll just refer this.
Okay, remind me, this is an administrative regulation, so it does or doesn't. It does or does not require board.
No, no.
So we do have this in place.
Yes, we, so through their policy services, any of those administrative regulations or board regulations, we have access to all of those through um, school board. We don't necessarily have all of these in our policy book, but if those regulations are available, we can just go on and we can get the regulations because that's part of the policy.
And then if, and you could look at this and say, oh, this isn't quite how we handle it. You're the administrator, so you could say, um, you know, I'll tweak number three because that isn't quite what we do. And now this is our, this is how we handle it without board.
No, because it's just an administrative, this is just guidance for administration, guidance for boards.
So do you have to take? Uh, there might be a hundred or five hundred of these administrative regulations. Do you as an administrator need to take any action beforehand to say, this is our, this is how we do this, like the board is. Approved, approves policy?
Do you, and let's see, it's.
Or you just say, okay, well, somebody asked a question, so let me look.
That's what I do.
Okay.
My situation, my situation, you know, like, and I didn't even know this one existed. Because I didn't even think about the meals, you know, and then as I'm, that's the thing about going through policy, right, you start looking at it and it was like, oh, we have, there is administrative. You know, so I can go and I can see the guidance, like, why did the state say we have to charge a certain amount for adult meals? Well, here it tells you like why that is, you know, why the, the cost has to be what the cost has to be.
So you're, we're not acting on this today.
No, that's just.
That's just for information. Okay, any additional questions on the meal? The school lunch policy and regulations, otherwise we'll move to. F F D.
If you just.
Name of the policy.
Yeah, um, possessing weapons. We just did this in December, um, because there were changes in the law, I, you probably remember that, right? Okay, um, more changes in the law and it was more in the definition because I think for schools. It was open to interpretation and then argument from, you know, if a child was removed from school, it, it wasn't clearly defined. So now the law, and you can see that on the amended policy, is clearly defined and there just really isn't any. There's really no, but the world of this policy. And I, they did add which, uh, that you, the firearm on school property or a school function. That was added, you know, because I'm betting that that was probably up for interpretation of the schools or.
So for example, let's say the. This, the district had a back to school welcome party in, in Hockenberry Park, as, as just as an example. That's not on school property, but it is a school.
Well, I mean, school. Yeah, so I, there's just no way of ruining that, I think we just have to accept that just because it's. Not a law.
Okay.
State law.
All right, what's the next one?
Suspension and expulsion, F F K. This is required again, so the main thing for this was just that definition of dangerous weapon firearm. And then at school function, we had that in there, so there's really not.
Very related to the previous laws, yes. And finally, the page triple A.
Yeah, so this one was just recommended, we did have a policy. So um, I went through and um, made this suggestion that, and this just has to do with the private tutors. So it said that private tutors, your option, and you can change this if you want, it says. You can either use private tutors will or private tutors may, I always think it's safer to go with may because that gives us an option. Cause if we have that will in there, obviously that, that one little word makes a big difference for how we put into practice, takes care of schools, so.
And I see, I asked you. What you recommended and you already recommended it, I don't know, this, the, this part of it was an opening formula, I think at the time. That it is now, because they had a glitch in my. Yeah, I know there was a, there was quite a bit of debate or discussion on a bill related to COVID, two years coming into school. Going through during the last minute, so that's probably what gave rise to this policy. This is not a required policy, it's recommended. But, and we already had it.
We did.
And we um. We, you're recommending that we use. Maybe allow rather than will be allowed, and then you would be the authority.
At the very end of this policy, there is another bracket piece, I didn't know if you wanted this in there. The superintendent will or may periodically request a summary as to number of frequency of parent and citizen visits, which in turn will be reported to board. I didn't know if you wanted that on there. I didn't even know if that was necessary.
I can't imagine. Why I would want you to report at a board meeting that. Twenty five parents was in last month, I, I don't know. I couldn't think of anything. I guess future boards can address.
I don't think that was a serious issue, you're gonna.
So. Do we ever help by the tutors that wanna come in?
I can't think of any. But you know, it's usually a teacher that's doing it, and if a teacher asks to use their classroom to tutor, we just allow them to do it. This is just a service for our kids, so, you know, and the teacher's probably getting paid. And honestly, if it was one of our kids and they were struggling and that it was a private tutor, I don't see why we would say.
I would wonder in the case that it was not one of our staff members that's being, which we know. Would we have any responsibility to do a walk around check on a individual that's meeting with our student on our property?
That's a good question, yeah.
Even if it's at the, the parents' request and then we are paying what?
Yeah.
Probably not gonna happen.
Yeah.
Okay, so that concludes the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight policies. That are on our agenda today for consideration of a first reading. These are all amendments to policies that we currently have. Some are recommended, some are required, at least one is required for our accreditation process. And Anna has provided us with. A language, the correct language for the motion. Uh, to accept these amendments as a first reading.
I have a question first, in high school. If we take a test. We can do very good or we skip a day or something like that, we can take it through this later.
As far as like N D S A or. Guess it just depends on that class, that would be very individual, the teachers, that would be very individual. And.
There's not an policy that says, you know, tomorrow we're taking the test and we have to take it.
Cause then that individual, you know. Teacher in the morning is imposing there. You know, there's a lot of policies on um. Instruction.
All right, anything else, is there? Uh, a motion to amend these policies. On first reading. And when we say as written, we are intending to incorporate the, the changed language from professional development to professional. On first reading as written, whether they first, if presented for action with the next regular. Well done, thank you, is there a second? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing done, please call the roll, I'll, I'll say this isn't procedural. Uh, Ron De Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel is absent, Monica Heimbach, Brian Sire, Sonny Neal. Yes, motion passes four to zero. The next item on the agenda is a policy that cell is asking us to give some thought to. If what, what, signing bonus is. Board members, a, a lot, uh. State law does allow the district to offer signing bonuses under certain conditions. Can't be coaching teachers from other districts, but. Given the difficulty in hiring teachers. She's asking us to consider this, not promoting it, she's not. Obviously, we, we'd be sometime before we would implement this unless. Somebody popped up through. Or that high school language or something, but. Um, just any initial reactions?
And that's under the, I, uh, it's the House Bill eleven eighty seven and that was in the guidance from school boards, why? The expansion of the board or.
You'll note that this one doesn't say required, recommended or cognia, it says member requested, so as a member of policy services. Yet almost accept this stuff. It. So, members of policy services such as us can request, say, you know, we would like, please draft the policy for our consideration, so. Clearly, um, well, it's in, first of all, it's in law and. Some school district requested uh, policy for it, so I would say the answer is yes, it's happening. Are you aware of any specific instances or districts in our area?
I mean, I've seen it on Lister, but I couldn't tell you any specific, but um, I think this was more just probably for those schools that um. A superintendent doesn't go out for ten thousand dollars, you know, and get um, an English teacher, you know, just sign some kind of parameters from the board saying. This is what you can offer, you know, no different than a. If I heard an expense over a certain dollar, you guys wanna be notified of that. And like I said, not promoting, I'm just saying, this is just what they were throwing there after the House bill standard it, just, just the lack of teachers. I do know that you cannot offer a bonus to a teacher that has only worked in a district for one year. They have to work in a district for at least two years and then you can offer them a bonus. It was before they could only offer a bonus to somebody that was new to the state or new to the teaching now, you know, but. Trying to not create that coaching system of like, hey, I know there's a teacher over there, I'm gonna offer you a five thousand dollar bonus to us, so.
Anybody have experience in business or knowledge of signing bonuses in? Other areas that, and how, how effective they are? Did you find it, it was effective at tiny tornadoes both in recruitment and then retention?
That would be a great question for the director. Again, the kind of like the teaching shortage right now with daycare, so.
I, I've heard people comment that are familiar with signing bonuses or are aware of. Are, are aware of situations where the person that accepted the signing bonus, as soon as they fulfill their required time. There's another signing bonus, so. At, at somewhere else.
Right, other situations that can.
I. I don't, I'm not against considering it, but I think we should also consider any other ways that we can continue to make our district an attractive. Uh, and our community an attractive place to live and work and raise a family. The other, you know, what's happening at the hospital, it's happening at the nursing home in our community. The other, you know, what's happening at the hospital, it's happening at the nursing home in our community, and, you know, this is only re, this is only in reference to teachers, where we know that staff within our community, classified staff move from here to there and over here, so. It's a tough spot.
And and this is obviously just for certified, the classified, if we needed to offer a bonus.
Yeah, and and the other consideration is, how does that make your current staff?
I would just say, I I think it'd be more beneficial if we did something for the staff that's here, that has put in years to reach them, because if we're going to get a different, we're going to get a family that's going to move in. And we'd say we have ten teachers that have been here for twenty years, that's more attractive than.
I'm glad to hear that.
I would, I would be.
Glad to hear it because this board put has put a retention bonus within the negotiated unit for our teaching staff and with. Uh, with the administration, uh, started some retention incentives for our classified staff and it's, we like it.
Yeah.
It's not a hundred percent effective, but.
So are we seeing, let's not worry about this for right now?
Bring it back if you think you absolutely need it. I think let's let's look for other ways, like like we've done.
Um.
Yeah, I see that. Okay, sorry if we skipped over you when we shouldn't have. Good morning, Marsha. Good morning, Sue.
Good morning, everybody. It's so nice to see you again and some nice uh new faces as well. Um, I would like to introduce you to Sue Guyguard. She is one of our facilitating coaches with Elliot. And McMahon, and she will be supporting um school districts and myself in the area around West Fargo and in your particular area. Sue, you want to um just say hello and introduce yourself real quick?
Yes, thank you. I'm excited to be working with you all. I am a outgoing board member in Houston ISD and have been doing this governance work. Um, here for a while, and so I'm excited to work with y'all and help you in your journey to improve outcomes for your kiddos.
Yeah, if you didn't catch it, she did say y'all. He he is also from from Texas, and I've had an opportunity to work with Sue on several occasions, and we are extremely lucky to snatch her from some of the work on the National School Board Certification Tour and have her work with us in North Dakota. Um, one of the reasons that we asked to be on the agenda is the, since our training for the B Legendary Institute, uh, the state of North Dakota has decided to fund the cost of. One year of coaching implementation. There are two actual coaching models. One is a support. Um, quarterly system where you have access to a coach um each quarter just to guide you and develop you and and support you through the process. As you work in implementing those best practices from our institute. The second is uh really a very heavy lifting. Um, um, you have nonstop access to board coaches as well as all of the templates and designs and. Um, um, uh, whoever's doing the time tracking, that includes that support, so I know you'll probably be excited to hear that. So, uh, Sue and I met with Anna yesterday and discussed some of these options, uh, sent her uh both copies of the MOU and um. Just wanted to see today if you guys had any questions and uh we are happy to be able to support you um in any way uh possible because of. This is something that we really want to get flying in North Dakota, and it's um very well noted that your um NDPI is is putting putting the money behind this to support you in your district. Anna, did you want me to add anything else or did that sum it up in a nutshell?
I think that sums sums it up in a nutshell, right? Does anybody have any questions or you?
So, Marsha, will this this include in this first year the 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 complete development of an operations manual for the board? Will that be included in this scope of work?
Yes.
That sounds like a really big job, so, thank you, Miss.
Well, we've uh Sue and I did an entire operations manual for the eighth largest school district in the United States, so uh but we're lucky that we have some templates and some guidelines and things that we can put together and and some really well laid out processes for that, as well as um community engagement support.
Sounds helpful. I'm excited to get started, see, see what happens.
I think you and I are going to be spending a lot of time together, Sonia.
Have to find some more meat raffles, I guess.
I guess so, I, we uh we hope to be coming up in September if Sue, I mean Anna, if you want to um look at those dates and get back to me. Um, hopefully we'll be up there and and go to another Angry Beaver Meat Raffle.
Yeah, first Friday. I think it doesn't start till October, though. Um, so what other districts in our area are you working with?
Right now, Richland um and Valley City.
Any other questions? Not. Thank you for joining us. Good to meet you, Sue.
Right. Thanks.
You too.
Have a great day. We're going to continue watching to help with time tracking, just so you know that we're um not jumping off, but we'll mute and put our videos back on.
All right, thank you. All right, so resuming our agenda with under regular meeting where item C, business. And we'll get to the second reading of the personnel handbook, which was linked in your guidance for your review. I think there were just a few minor typographical editorial changes with dates or years or some. Uh, is there a motion to approve the second reading of the twenty three twenty four OPS personnel handbook? So, Heimbuck moves. Is there a second?
Sure.
Sayer seconds. Any discussion?
Uh, one thing from Sheila, she had a question about um if a policy changes during the school year, do we go back to the original policy? And no, we do not. And if you read in your handbook, it's on page uh four, it says handbook language disclaimer, that this is not a contract between you and the teachers or whoever, you know, we refer to this handbook. This is um uh only a guide and you at any time have the right to change the handbook. And what it whatever it happens or whatever policy is referred to at the time of the appearance or the referral to the policy. That is the policy at that time. It does not go back to, let's see, everybody signs this in September, it doesn't go back to the September policy, it goes to the policy at the time that we refer to it. So that's your protection there on the handbook language disclaimer, except the negotiated agreement, right? Because if you're reading here, also, the contract supersedes the policy and the regulations. So if it's something that is in the contract, that takes precedence and then it goes to policy. And in law, of course, Sue, you know, who receives all of that, but so it it that cleared that up a little bit as far as, even though that, so that helps that we have these live links, right? So if something changes, the teachers have or and then all the employees have access to that particular policy.
And then, so after a board meeting, for example, at which the board may have changed the policy that affects classified staff. Does administration, yes, that's public information. It was a public meeting, but let's face it, lots of our staff probably don't sit and watch the meetings. Does administration then have a practice of notifying staff of changes?
So after every board meeting, I send an update to all of our staff members and tell them here are the things that happened during the school board, and if there's a change in something as far as policy, I I always update them on all of those. So it's like, today I'll do that this afternoon, I'll tell them, here's the things that took place during board meeting, and I hit all the highlights, anything that would affect them, so.
All right, anything else regarding the motion on the table to approve the handbook for the second reading? Questions? Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ron De Day.
Yes.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel's absent, Monica Heimbuck. Sonya Neal.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Next item is an update on staffing. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I crossed off. Uh, yeah, I'd like to, no, let's skip the budget.
If you want to skip it.
I know, we do want to do the budget.
That might be sad.
Okay, so I just touched the budget. And it said it didn't want to open funding, but it previously did. I'm not sure what's going on. I will go, I know what I want to do. I want to go to your email that you sent yesterday, and that's the most up to date budget, right? And I asked you some questions, which you answered. Joanna, can we get the budget up on the screen? And then I'll just open one question. Did anyone else send any questions or have have to prepare to ask your questions? You have the late, you should have the latest link.
Yeah. Very, I send you move. So I had talked to several people about uh mill levies. I called Wanda Shepherd at County yesterday. Just to see if the certificate of levy, if I were to put a number in there, which could be close to what our taxable value would be. And if I had the off on the left hand side to say I, we want the max seventy mils, twenty mils, three mils, whatever, um, would she adjust for that? She, no. We have to request.
Yeah.
So we, our discussion ensued on what she had. She had three fourths of our commies. She had one county that had given her a number yet, so still unsure of what her. So, um, she said, you know, we kind of talked about what we thought maybe it could be. So then. About some formulas that's on the certificate of levy. I talked with Adam at the State DPI. And so I I changed the certificate of levy to show that our taxable value is going to be twenty five million, because right now we are about twenty four. Twenty or did take over twenty four. And so that's without knowing the change to, I think, with the sergeant count. Million and seventy mils. Wanda was fairly certain that that would for sure. Hit our seventy mils.
Where on, you're talking about the certificate of levy. Where, okay, I see. Okay, so I'm on page.
The very back.
Page nine, it says of the levy. And you're showing a taxable valuation of twenty three million five ninety seven. What are.
So I must not have sent that out last night.
Okay, so.
So everything changed. It's just the twenty five million, and then they, there's a, there's numbers below that on page nine that are automatically updated. Because they're auto populated.
All right, so what are we officially needing to approve here today?
Just need to officially approve. No.
For the budget.
The budget. The levy I just sent along as a, Anna and I have to sign it and send it in, but that has.
But do we not have to ask on the dollars that we're trying to levy? Or is that, the dollars are in the budget?
The dollars are in the budget.
Okay, so this, the the document that, ah, I see, the document that's on the screen now.
So if we go to the seventeen or one point seven million, you see the little red triangle. Those means that there's little dots in there that I've got. That's where I've got the twenty five million as that seventy mils that comes up to. Uh. One point seven three one. And then I decided to take. We want the full seventy mils, but we will most likely never get that, simply because a lot of people pay early and take their discounts on their ill received taxes, or they don't pay at all. So we, their, the county's not going to give us that money if they haven't received it. So that's approximately five percent is the eighty six thousand.
So you're, for for purposes of this budget, you feel like you are. Overestimating our revenues because you're using a twenty five million dollar taxable valuation as opposed to, we're only at over twenty two and a half, right?
No, we, we're guessing it it'll be just around twenty four point three, twenty four point five.
Okay, but which is. Quite a bit higher than last year.
Yes.
Like, my brain is saying last year was in the twenty two or something.
It was. Yes, I think that is.
And to refresh the board, once, when we adopt this today, we can, between now and October, so here are the steps. Today, we will approve this or some variation.
Some area budget, yes.
Um, this, the county will send out tax estimated tax statements, including district, the county, and all other taxing jurisdictions. We'll all get those in the mail and they'll say, here's what all these districts want now. And then everybody will have the opportunity to come to not just our board meeting or our public meeting. To talk about their taxes and what we've asked for, but the county, the irrigation district, any other taxing jurisdiction in September. And then in up, by October, we can, we can take that input into account and we can make adjustments.
Right.
And if I remember right, we could adjust either up or down where cities, we can only go down.
We can only go down.
Okay. And so you. Your, the budget that's before us is imposing that we maximize our general fund levy. Our special reserve levy of three mils, our building fund levy of twenty, and adding for the first time ever a miscellaneous, ever in my time, a miscellaneous levy of twelve, right? And again, for what you're showing us now is using. It comes in at only twenty four million. Then the dollars will be less, but we can only, we can only levy a max of, oh, up up to twelve percent more than we did last year, like general only.
Of general only, yes. So the most our general levy could possibly be would be the uh one point seven three one.
Oh, so that's what what you've got here. Ah, so you've got, show that little memo again, that note. So. Is it a coincidence that this dollar amount is exactly twelve percent more than last time?
Well, twelve percent, that's the most we can get at twelve percent. And so that would be the most we could levy, but if we go to, what is twenty five million? It's one point seven five million, so we, we cannot even get the full seventy at the twenty five million. So that's why I went with this number, because that's. That's the highest.
Okay. And so is the twelve percent threshold, is that twelve percent more than what we collected last? And so is the twelve percent threshold, is that twelve percent more than what we collected last year? Twelve percent more than what we levied last year?
That is twelve percent of the general fund levy. So last year, we levied one-point-five-four-six million dollars. And that came from.
One-two, there it is. I get one-seven-three-one-five-one.
Yeah, well, I do. There was more numbers.
Yeah, okay, very, okay. All right. So the, the revenue picture is more clear to me. Projective.
I did not change the SRCTC rental. Um, we had a good year for interest. I changed the driver's education for the last, the fees that we had last time. Um, there, I had two hundred dollars at forty students. Um, the per pupil student aid, that one, that's, that's an estimate, the four-point-five million dollars. Because of course, that, once Stars comes up on September, September first, we should have a little, a little more accurate reading. Title, REAP, those are all already set. The line that says other restricted federal revenue, those are two grants that we still have that are carrying forward. The bus grant is still coming in. Still going to bust this year, which should be told, it's probably December now, so. The science of reading grant at sixty-one-hundred. Um, and then the rest of them are transfers.
So when, when I look at this and I am thinking too of when ICS was here and Kirk Ham commented about what benchmarks his board used to have. Well, as an example, I don't remember the exact numbers, but we liked to be, have our balance fifty percent of our general fund expenditures. So how would you represent that on this?
Well, unfortunately, we aren't there. Last year, we had our great, we had a great, a good year at one point, almost one-point-two million dollars is our ending fund balance. However, that included the five-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars of S R money that came in. And it's just sitting there in that one-point-two. Well, that's been ear-tagged to go to the building funds. So that becomes an expense because it has to come out of the general fund into the building. So that becomes an expense of the school or, and so then again, that drops down to seven-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, seven-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, and actually, I didn't even take the full five-hundred, uh, what is it? Five-oh-five. Yes, all that's remaining now is the four-hundred, let's see, the four-oh-nine-oh-fifty-two is what's left on the contract for I, um, uh, T F hours.
So when I looked at the, the budget, yes, true, dear, the A B four, I was seeing an ending fund balance of about six-hundred-and-sixty thousand, but I think the revenues must have, or something has changed now we're up to seven.
Yes, it was the, it was the property taxes that I, that I wanted to reflect. My conversation.
And so the seven-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollar general fund ending six. By that to the expenditures of seven. We're at, just under. However, included in that seven-point-four million dollars of general funding expenditures, if we look up the the biggest one maybe is the seventy-eight thousand, the spent transfer to, just, you're going to hide it. Transfer to building, seventy-eight-three-thirty-seven, that's coming directly from special reserve, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So as an example, that seventy-eight thousand dollars is being transferred into general because that's the only thing we can do with it. And then it's going out of there to building because that's where we need. So it is a general fund expenditure and we have to reflect it as such. But it, it's really just a pass. Are there any other items on here that are sort of a pass? I mean, one could argue all the grants are are federal.
There, I mean, they're all, and then the expenses are, are located down the line. So yeah, they're kind of a pass-through, but we have to show them as an expense. Oh, the only other one, and of course, obviously, the, the S R money. Because that's not included in any income this year. It's just the beginning fund balance up top. Um, the activities fund and the hot lunch fund, of course, that is just the general fund transferring to pay those things.
Where, where are we using the miscellaneous funds right now? That twelve.
Okay.
A split, we're assessing twelve mils.
Twelve mils, okay.
How is that flowing?
So, yep, if we go down to the two-sixty-nine, two-sixty-nine, so I, the bus is a hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, I think, or eight-hundred. That's we should get real seventy, whatever, thousand. Uh, the east entrance is what ICS and Texas about putting the.
Snow.
The code, yeah, that was about an eight thousand dollars. Our special ed van or our school van, I should call it special ed, um, is all. And we just, that's a vehicle. Um, the south gym floor, Anna and I looked up, uh, the last time they were here and it was like teen six dollars and that was, that was pre-COVID, I think it was twenty-seventeen. So we're guessing it costs approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to fix. Or to.
Fix.
That's not fixed. It's. Be stripped, you know, and redone. And I think they wanted to do that several years ago, but the money, and we just kept pushing it off. And they said it really just cannot be pushed off anymore. And then we have the temporary chiller. We were guessing at a hundred thousand. If you would think we can get it for eighty, that's, that's even better. Oh, yeah.
Little city.
Yeah, we'll see. This would be a place where we can go pay for that.
So the miscellaneous fund levy would be coming directly into a miscellaneous fund. And you're showing like the bus would go to general, the east entrance would go to building? Or would it all throw, flow through general and then get distributed?
They would all go through general and get distributed.
So all of that is also reflected in our general fund expenditures.
No.
Whether it's, no, but, but it goes there. And that seven-point-four million dollars total expenditures is including the bus, the east entrance, the found, no.
The only one that, the only one that I have in the general fund right now is the bus. Because that's in the transportation, that's already contracted, we have to pay that. So we could take the bus off of here. Um, but the rest of those are not anywhere in the general fund right now.
But is the money, so the money came from miscellaneous for the south gym floor goes directly to building?
No, we, no. I don't have it going anywhere.
But it goes to zero. It has, if it comes in here and it ends up at zero, it's going out somewhere. If, the income is transferred out to somewhere.
The income is just paid up with the expenses I have. And, okay, so transfer. For choice of. No, there, I didn't transfer any of the money into the general fund. And I didn't keep those expenses in the general fund.
Okay, so that was my point, that these expenses don't become a part of that seven-point-four million dollars total general fund expenses and enter into the calculation of that our balance is less than ten, ending fund balance is just under ten percent of our general. Kind of.
In the end, I've been told that the miscellaneous fund, this is all deposited into the general fund and the expenses then there should come out. So yes, they would eventually end up in the general fund. I didn't put them in there because I don't know what percentage you guys are comfortable with. And I didn't want to have to keep going back and changing. You know, you want full twelve mils because then that also takes, oh, changes the five percent. And then the expenses, I wanted to match exactly what brought it. But we wouldn't have to change. I mean, it could all just go to the general fund as long as I, you know, even if it may be a building, if we pay it, put it in the general fund, I can pay it out of the general fund. And if we want, at the end of the year, I can transfer that money into the building fund and pay it from, you know, like the, uh, the east entrance. Not that we have to do these things, but I know that Sheila had asked, okay, tell us what we're going to use as miscellaneous funds. If we're going to go and ask for them, tell us what things that we could do support.
And there's no stipulations on the miscellaneous fund into how we can take it out, if we can use it?
No, that's, uh, that's the thing. This year is that when we do the special reserve, there's all these stipulations. But with the miscellaneous, there's no limit. You can just do the, and it can be for a one-time, it can be for multiple years. You guys can decide as a board, what do you mind with that? That's the beauty of the miscellaneous. And then obviously, we don't have to, doesn't have to be the full twelve mils. If we, if you choose not to, any number of them.
So we're proposing then seventy mils in general, twelve in miscellaneous, twenty in building and three in special reserve. That's one-hundred-and-five mils versus what was our total mils levied last year? Because, and we didn't levy the max because we didn't know the little tricks to make sure we, well, we tried to.
Yeah.
We didn't estimate either.
Ninety-one-point-zero-five mils is what we levied last year.
Okay, all this is ninety-one. So we're increasing by, uh, this proposal is to increase fourteen mils. And last year it was ninety-one, that's a fifteen-point-four percent increase in our.
And of that fifty percent, twelve of them are.
Which we've never levied before.
Not that I have record.
And for many, many years, we were below eighty. I don't have it in my file opened, but we have, we have been under eighty for many, many years. Because our map, we, we tried to stay between sixty. And it would have been about eighty-five.
And our building had gone back up to twenty until last year. Now, okay, remember when we had our tax levy meeting, there's that new law, it was in the guidance that what we consent to the public is not mils, it's dollars.
Have you done any? In on this increase would mean for a two-hundred-dollar home and or a quarter of land?
Not a quarter of land because we don't have the value that those went up according to Wanda or, or, well, we did. But I think we used old numbers. And so I know she said that the land values, the ag land values went up this. Um, by the time we have that tax levy, we will have it. Because I got the worksheet, we were just waiting for final month numbers just to make sure that it was a little.
So, so then that, that triggers the warning that, okay, I'm a, I'm a ag land owner, so my valuation is going to go up. And my, my levy is also, the, the mill levy is also going to go up by fourteen. What was, was, was I at fourteen percent? Or fourteen mils? Fourteen mils.
Yeah.
Which is more than what you. And so it could be a bit of sticker shop.
Looking, I mean, as we move forward, if we don't go for some of those miscellaneous funds, I mean, we have to finish that gym floor, we know that, right? Um, we, we've got the bus, but I'm looking at what our carryover is. It's always been in a really long time, right? If we're going to do a temporary fix for the air conditioning, that's going to be out of that, you know, so somewhere those dollars have to be. Yes. I, I think on these items here, the miscellaneous, the van is, that's just a, a wish. Just, I mean, we're looking forward. Oh, how the van is aging and, um, but those other things, you know.
So, so you, you could make a, an administrative decision that, no, we're not going to buy a new van.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep.
But we have a fleet of, in addition to buses, we have two cars, a van.
All right, smaller bus.
Small buses. And so, you know, those need to be in the budget to be replaced every five, six, seven, ten. I, I mean, I think we are, are, both with, with all of our vehicles, since I've been on the board, it's run the wheels off. We don't, we don't buy new vehicles often.
Well, that recommendation that came through a less than five years, like the drivers' recommendation, but say that's a, you don't want your running miles on it, I mean, all the things that.
So we are discussing the budget. Motion on the floor. So there's no recommended language for a motion.
No, I'm sorry.
We would be seeking a motion to approve the
preliminary budget.
初 preliminary budget. And, and we can, we can incorporate in the motion, uh, as presented, or if, if someone feels strongly change to our, our general fund levy is increase the max twelve percent of dollars, right?
Right. The only thing that this, uh, that could change or could be motioned was to decrease the miscellaneous mils. Um, well, we, we could reduce.
The building. And we could reduce any.
Yes, yes.
You can reduce.
Yep, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary budget.
As presented? All right. Sayer moves to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four budget as presented. Is there a second? I can find that second. Uh, again, we've made clear that we have, um, increased post turn tax levy by at, you know, it's to be presented to the public for their input. And we'll see what happens. We can reduce it in future.
Correct.
By October, but it has to be certified by October something, tenth, fifteenth. So we'll probably need to have a special meeting in late September, early October, because we're meeting on the third Friday. We will, my, oh, okay. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Heimbacher? Neil's absent. Ron DeDey is Sony Neal.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Uh, moving on then to staffing. You have some open position.
Yes, um, so we have filled some of our care professionals. I don't know the exact numbers, so I don't want to give them incorrectly, but, um, our Andrea, our specialized director and Brad, our and Greg have been working really hard for those professional. They've been talking to people and trying to get the word out. So you're starting to fill some of those, but I'll just wait till we already get your report on, we hired. We actually have got interest in driving bus, um, a couple of people on staff, somebody outside has. Interest in driving bus, um, a couple of people on staff, somebody outside has, um. Given their interest in it, so they're working themselves through the coursework and we're paying for their coursework. We're paying for their time that they spend doing the coursework, we're gonna pay them to drive up to take the test, you know, so we're gonna make sure that they're reimbursed for all of those. So that we have the bus driver, so it'll take a while, we won't be able to get them through in the next couple of weeks, but. We will have some new bus drivers help out. To start out, Dave and I worked on buses yesterday, bus routes yesterday, start out, Dave's probably gonna have to be driving, um, we're gonna have to go on substitutes. Because we have one bus route that does not have a morning or an afternoon driver. So we get more people, so Dave is gonna try to put a band-aid on it. I reached out to the, um, families that are open and rolling. Trying to cover up that, right? Activity bus drivers, the, the teachers that are going through the coursework, probably do some of the activity bus driving course. We still need, um, that part-time books assistant, so we're going in school year toward handed. We did hire, um, our custodial staff, so we're fully staffed, custodial staff, we hired our part-time lunch clerk. Or actually, it's gonna be part-time lunch, part-time custodial, that'd be a good position, so we did fill that lunch clerk position. Uh, Corey Shaw took the junior high football coaching job.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and we did have, um, a resignation from, um, the annual from the Acorn. Jess McGuire resigned from that, but Kila Tree Gold is gonna take that job, so.
She was, she had, they were doing it together.
Yeah, but Jess has kinda got a lot on her plate now with doing the cyber spirits, so. So that's where we are, um, on staffing, so we'll just work on those. I, I don't know, we're gonna, we're gonna do volleyball. Rocks is kinda coming up the plan, so.
Alright, sounds like a little bit of progress. Superintendent evaluation model, we have this down for possible action. And I noted in my email to you yesterday, the, the evaluation model itself is listed as an exhibit.
Yeah.
Which we do not act on, so that's, yeah. Um, this is what we come up with, and this is actually just an updated version that. Has been in place by the school boards association for some time, which, which we missed, I don't know how we missed updating, though. The, the first document you see in the packet is the existing job, this, the old version of the job description. And a dollar a year ago. And that has ten different domains of, um. Jobs, responsibilities, the newer one, some of those things are combined and reorganized. Into six different performance responsibilities, which I think makes sense. We have, it, it's just, this is.
Oh, there were some things that, I mean, you, there really wasn't goal setting and there really wasn't some of those things that are just kind of. More, you know, for the job and with, um, the national standards, so, yeah.
So I guess I'm, I think we should approve your job description.
Okay.
Um, and then just know that. The, um, evaluation model is going to look something like this exhibit. As a reminder, this states, um, if you look on page. One of the exhibit, the one that says, um, N E S B superintendent evaluation template. I don't know how to look for what page it is, I'm gonna tap it, but it's after the job description, pretty wise job description. Note that, uh, item three says, uh, the state requires that we evaluate the superintendent. By November fifteenth and March fifteenth, and so. It says for the November evaluation, you rate on performance from March through October. Well. I know you've only been around, but you've been hanging around, you've. And then, um. For the March evaluation, you'll be looking at the performance November through February. But in reality, if, if you have concerns about Mrs. Self's performance, have a conversation with her. And then also have this, the job description and the evaluation model. In front of you throughout the year and, and pay attention to those things, because that's what you're going to be rating for. I am not sure yet if this is going to be an only paper document. Or if there will be some way that it can be completed digitally, it doesn't look too, um. Overwhelming to do a, to do a paper copy of this, to evaluate that. So, a reminder, so by the October board meeting, actually, you know, we're, you know what we're gonna run into with this third. Third Friday, we're gonna run into. Meeting to have either complete the evaluation at the October meeting or have a special meeting. Because November fifteenth is likely, November fifteenth and March fifteenth will likely. Be before our Thursday, third Friday of the month. Yeah, we'll have to have.
You know, under seventeen, the third Friday, but still, that's one of the fifteen.
Looking way ahead to March. The third Friday is fifteen. So, as long as it's not a struggle. So, um, but that's okay, we're, there's reasons why we find with the third Friday and we'll just, we'll figure it out as we move forward. But, so with that, I am seeking a motion to approve the superintendent's job description. As presented. And, and we won't need to act on the evaluation model, but know that what's in there is what is going to be what. Dave moves to approve the superintendent's job description. Is there, as presented, is there a second? Uh, sire's seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? You're in none, please call the roll.
Uh, Sheila Nagel is absent, Monica Hindbug, Ron DeDee.
Yes.
Brian Sayer. Son Neil.
Yes, a motion passes four to zero. Moving on then, um, Shannon has shared some information with us about liability insurance for the district.
So I had spoken with, um, Scott at the, their, their, which is the North Coast Insurance Reserve Fund. And he said that right now the. There's a change in, in law that's going to, it's gonna be gradual, but by twenty twenty-six. Their, um, you. School systems or political subs will only be able to be sued up to two million dollars per. Event or act. So we are already at the three million dollar threshold. Um, view, and that would be things, we could be. The event could be a bus driving accident or something at the football field or. In the parking lot, playground, whatever it may be. The only thing that is not under this cap. Is things such as, um. What he, you could call it emotional damages or civil, like, um. If, if gender identity. Those are not going to be subject to a cap. They're not, they're not. They're covered bullying, um, anything that would not be a, you know, a visible act. He said, right now, that, that's wide open. So he thought, you know, uh, uh, we're already above the, the, the two million dollar cap. We are at three million. And it, it's a combination of both the umbrella and the, in the vehicle, that's what they, they consider their number. So we are at the three billion dollar level already, he said you've, we've already gone above and beyond what's. Going to happen by twenty twenty-six.
For the fetal and.
For those, yeah.
For the emotional.
Correct, yeah. So I, I don't, I don't know where the, the board's tolerance is on. Going up higher for those things that are not. If we were to go up to a four million dollar policy, it's gonna cost us seven hundred and twenty-six dollars for that additional million dollars. And then of course, six hundred and ninety-nine.
Does ambulance?
Correct.
Okay, so you're saying we're. Our umbrella, this is the umbrella policy, we're at two million, but we have already a million embedded in an auto.
Together, they're at three million.
Okay, so we're already at the three million, so your first. Increase of seven fifty-seven, we're already paying that?
We're already paying that, yeah, we already paid the eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, yep, yep. I guess if we really wanted to, we could go back up to the two, some because. Um, that's what's going to be cap on those, those, any of those expenses or.
So if we, if we take no action, uh, we will remain at the three million dollar coverage level and. You're bringing this to our attention without a recommendation or request?
Without, without a recommendation or a request, um, it was, uh. Um, the agent at Western Agency kinda thought, and I don't know who he was looking at, you know. Maybe thought we should go a little bit higher. Um. Cause I think with the dirt, they didn't give me an opinion, but they didn't feel that they thought we should have to go higher. Cause we're already higher than. Or what the.
The legal, the legal. For some risks.
For some risks, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any desire to increase our liability limit? We can, we can come back to it and do it anytime.
Correct, it was, just came up because we're still trying to get, um. In the, the policies, they're paid in full, but he's still working on trying to make sure that the signs, um. Um, and then this was the one of, the one of the other things that he was kinda still working the numbers. So that the insurance number, I still might have another bill depending on if we want to add. You know, whatever the cost is on it, the, the marquee signs on front. I did have him take, um. Um, the, the sign, the, uh, football, baseball sign was never covered, that was a four dollar policy. So I said, I, I gave him the okay to go ahead. I haven't paid for it, yeah, so I guess you can.
Are you thinking about the new sign that's out in the park?
I think it's a scoreboard. The scoreboard had never been, the only thing that we insured out at the football, baseball department was the. Crows nest or the, what do you call it? The press box.
But I'm usually, I'm liable to have six cents out there, we read the. Alright, any, um, desire to act on that, or we can always come back to it in the future if, if you come across. Uh, find that other schools of our size are carrying twice as much for some reason, I trust you.
And yeah, we, Anna and I kinda did some quick checking and, uh, the schools, smaller and maybe a little bit larger. Were right in the same area. The only other thing that we found out, um, I would like to know, there is. The playground, the, the tire chips, I'm not sure what's up. And the track, neither one of those are that he can, and the dirt doesn't ensure that. If we wanted to, we, he could, he'll go try and find someone that will ensure the actual track. But other than, you know, our vehicle or our car or a, you know, a building getting drug across the actual track. It really would be, I suppose a tornado can come by and suck up all the tire chips, so that would be missing, but. The actual, the actual playground equipment is covered, the.
What, what we would call wood chips.
Wood chips.
They may not be all really.
Plastic and tired.
Alright, any desire for a motion here? Not, we'll move on to the addendum to the.
Alright, so, so yep, the original negotiated agreements in my, uh, year six, there was a typo. Um, it read three thousand, um, three hundred and ninety-nine, it should have read three thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
This was for an assistant coaching position.
I, yes, yeah.
So, as a reminder, um, we were not able to find a word document of the negotiated agreement, correct? And so Anna and Shannon had to completely retype and did their utmost best to make sure that it was correct. One digit, uh, why not to that? Yeah, so.
So I have, uh, every, I, I reached out to the negotiating, the O E A negotiating team, they all looked at it. Have signed on an addendum, um, the two committee members have signed the addendum. Um, we would just be a, both of the school board to agree to the addendum to the negotiating twenty-three, twenty-five negotiated agreements.
Okay, uh. A recommendation for a motion in our guide, so I'll be seeking that motion for this project I am. Ron, Ron moves to approve the addendum to the twenty-three, twenty-five question. Is there a second? Sire's seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Monica Hindbug, Ron DeDee.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel's absent, Son Neil.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Finally, we get two items for the future agenda, uh, we're not acting on these, but we are. Speaking to our administration will be speaking as decision on whether or not to proceed with a strategic plan. And we, um, we've been providing us more information about that.
I can do that.
I know she referred to, uh, the plan that central costs has adopted and I, you know, I'm kind of flocking on a strategic plan. However, when I dove into theirs, I thought there was really good looking stuff in there and it looks a lot better than what we had.
I agree.
So, um, maybe share that out with us or, or our other information that will help us. I C S presentation, we're talking about this special, um, how, so what do you need a strategic plan decision?
Um, I think next month will be fun.
And then I C S will be here for the public meetings on August sixteenth and we have. I guess we've scheduled a special board meeting for seven, on that date for that presentation or their additional presentation with us. And will they be seeking, will be seeking an absolute decision?
I don't think it's time, I think, what's the information you're gonna kinda pull it over and. But the, and I, but I don't think there's a whole lot of time to join our feet, if we're gonna move forward, we're gonna.
It's the timing of when we would want to be seeking this. Okay, and then item C is the business manager evaluation, what, can you remind me what we discussed would be? Rather than filing a, both the superintendent and business manager in one, of course. Now we realize that the superintendent will probably have to have a special meeting, were we gonna, thinking of doing a business manager in September?
October.
We'll get more information on that. So our next meetings, is anything else for the good of the order here?
Yes, we need to, uh, find a date for our specific funding period.
Oh, right.
That has to be between September seventh and October seventh.
Oh, okay, so typically, so our special meeting will be August sixteenth at seven AM. That will be the I C S presentation, so then our regular meeting for September is the third Friday. Which is September the fifth. That will be the I C S presentation, so then our regular meeting for September is the third Friday, which is September the fifteenth, right?
Right.
And then, um, typically, we have the levy meeting. Immediately after that, say at eight thirty, I'm not sure if we, you know, it's certainly, we've never, no, I shouldn't say never, we have had people show up. Um, once or twice in my time. I, you know, it's certainly possible, I'm wondering if we set it at eight thirty. And we, and there are people here. We could perhaps, um, recess the regular meeting, have the public meeting, and then go back in.
Or have it at nine thirty.
I don't want to sit here till one thirty if we want, because if we publish, if we, if we schedule it at nine thirty. Okay. Let's say eight thirty. Do you want that? I'm sure. I don't remember. I'd say do it just, okay, we're not required to do it remotely, I would like people to come and show their.
Um, if I remember right, they really don't comment, it's just a place where they get to hear the information, yeah. It's not for comment, later I'll make.
I'm not sure.
They can make their comments, um, but it was, that's, there is, we are not required to respond, or. Or the response to be.
We wouldn't take any action, but we'll take that action, and we have to certify the budget by.
Over, I can't remember, it's October tenth or twelfth this year.
Okay, so if we were going to make a change.
It would be in that.
We have. All right, and then the regular meeting would be. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, so here we go.
Yeah, so on October twentieth, I'm not in this mark for any C E L, and that's that long break from school, so do you want to do it on October thirteenth? Because I think if we go off the October twenty-seventh, it's getting.
Yeah. Um, can you find out when we need to certify the levy, because then we, if we did their meeting on October thirteenth, then we can. Yeah. Deal with the budget then.
Oh, that's why I knew, I knew there was a link.
So the thirteenth is gonna be okay? Okay, so regular meeting in October, Friday, but, okay. Nothing else for the good of the order, which you've already wrapped up, so with that, uh, thank you, staff members who've joined us, thank you, Marsha and Sue. Uh, with that, I will declare the meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-two a.m.